Five thirty, and rise for the unification if you can, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Angel Ortiz, I'm the Associate Pastor at Integrity Church. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all who are gathered here. Thank you for your many blessings, for life and for health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We are so very grateful for liberty, for opportunity, and for justice. Your word says that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order. Therefore, I pray for every level of city official, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you graciously grant them continued wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare for the needs of our people, confidence in what is good and right, the ability to work together in unity, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set today, please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Bonita Springs. We pray these things in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let Jeff Field with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogez.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, I'm the mayor, and I'm glad you're all here. Whoever missed the memorial service, it was a tremendous quality that only the city of Bonita Springs could come up with. And Dan Charlton gave a very emotional speech, and it was all beautiful and timed just right. So, I thank the Parks Department and the volunteers that organized that, and it was a wonderful day in the park. Approval of minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
You have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogez.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye to approving the agenda.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, now we have a public comment on agenda items, so come forward, please.
We do have one registered speaker in addition to this gentleman.
For the record, my name is Jim Magnus, and I live in Bonita Springs. Mayor, council, staff, I had comments on city manager items A and C. Just wanted to, I'll be very short. Our family is very much in support of the Baron Collier project, and we hope that you will move forward with Baron Collier to improve the bamboo property. Item number C, regarding the Rails-to-Trails project, we're very much in support of that as well, and look forward to you working through that and finding the funds to be able to get that project off the ground. Thank you both, all, very much.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? Here we go.
Hello, my name's Deb Orton, I know I've been here before, right? I'll be very brief, I guess my, and I'm talking about eleven C as well, the first thing I want to do is just thank every single one of you for all of your support when it comes to this Rails-to-Trails project. Each of you, in your own way, have been able to support this, and it's taken us to where we are now, which is that we've making a lot of progress. I'm looking, in particular, councilperson Carr and deputy mayor Forbes, at the latest MPO meeting, it was approved that what we call BERT, this Rails-to-Trails project, was put as a high priority for FDOT. They had to reopen the MPO list of priorities, and that was unanimously accepted. That opens the door to funding at the state level, so that's really exciting. And then you have some opportunities today to keep moving us forward with federal funding. Trust for Public Land has a really robust funding plan, and part of that is federal funding, and you'll be talking about that today. So I encourage you to keep it moving forward, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to eight A, second reading, Mike Feegun, would you like to introduce this?
I'll read the title into the.
Oh, excuse me, after Mike.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending ordinance ten dash zero-two for a residential plan development to develop up to ten detached villas, boat docks, and other accessory uses, and to add five deviations located at two seven four nine five dash five one one Big Bend Road and two seven five two three Big Bend Road, Bonita Springs, Florida, three four one three four, and providing for an effective date.
And Mayor and council, just to remind you, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I know that there was a number of people at the first reading. Because this is quasi judicial, all testimony on this item will be by sworn, so I ask you, if you intend to speak, even if you just came to see what happens, but you might feel the need to swear, go ahead and stand, I'll swear you in right now. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, council, Mike Feegun with Community Development for the record, per usual, I'll just give a brief introduction, then we'll turn it over to the applicant. So, first of all, apologies for the length of the green sheet on this, and I know you like your green sheets a little bit shorter, but it felt appropriate to provide the full history from zoning board to how we got here to this point tonight. So, as Mike said, it is a request for ten detached villa units and boat docks and other ancillary accessory uses. It's an amendment to an RPD that was approved back in two thousand and ten, that at that time allowed for sixteen units and a variety of dwelling unit types, so it is a decrease in density from what was approved previously. There was a lot of moving and shaking on this application, it came in, you know, several years back, so there was a lot of work that was done to get it to this point. We feel the conditions that are attached to the draft ordinance and the staff report are reasonable and do protect the public interests. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Noel Davies, who is the attorney for the applicant, and Wayne Arnold, who is the planner of record for the application.
Well, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Feegun, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Noel Davies with the law firm of Davies Duke, on behalf of the applicant, BB Sunset Properties LLC. We have the full project team here this evening, our client representatives are here. Wayne Arnold with Q Grady Minor and Associates is our professional planner. Michael Herrera is our civil engineer, also with Grady Minor. Hans Wilson is our environmental consultant, and James Banks is our transportation engineer. This is an area of the subject property, I know you're all familiar with the property, we're at the north end of Big Bend Road, approximately one and a half acres. I'm going to have Mr. Arnold walk you through the specifics of our request, but before he does that, I would like to address, and specifically rebut, the comments that were made at first reading. First of all, we are not proposing a marina, this is an infill project in an already established neighborhood for a compatible use. Ten homes with ten corresponding boat slips, no marina components, no commercial components. Second, this is a downzoning, as you heard from Mr. Feegun, we are zoned residential plan development, RPD, today, and what was previously approved was sixteen homes with twelve boat slips. We could come in technically and seek to reinstate that prior master concept plan, but what we're seeking to do is less intense than the entitlements on the site today. Third, we are creating a land condominium, this is perfectly lawful, it's governed specifically by chapter seven eighteen of the Florida statutes. And one of the reasons your staff has found our application consistent is that land condos are allowed by state statute. Florida law recognizes the validity of a land condo, separate and distinct from plating provisions from subdivision provisions. Fourth, our use is a detached villa, as you heard from Mr. Feegun, that use is allowed by your comprehensive plan. It's similar in character and intensity to the expressly listed permitted uses. Fifth, the city has approved similar types of projects, many times in fact, and Mr. Arnold will walk you through some of the specifics of that, as well as our environmental expert. The point is simply to make that this is not some sort of new concept that we're proposing to the city. Item six, the drainage items on Big Bend Road will get better, not worse, as a result of this development, and that's because all of our water will be retained on our property, it will not flow onto the right-of-way. We're aware that the city is also actively working on those items specifically on Big Bend Road, immediately adjacent to the subject property. And seventh, and finally, regarding our master concept plan, staff rightfully determined that we are sufficient, but in the interest of clarification, we did add a notation regarding height and parking, and your staff has reviewed that, and it is included in your packet this evening. A few technical legal points that, if I may, I do have to get on the record before I turn it over to Wayne. First, the opposition in this matter is not a quote-unquote "party" to these proceedings, as that term is specifically defined in the Florida case law. Your city attorney, I know, is very familiar with the Florida law on this point, but we would object, for the record, to any recognition of them as a party. Your decision today does need to be based on substantial competent evidence. Again, I know that Mr. Rooney is familiar with that legal standard, as you all are, and the evidence in the record already, from applicants, professionals, as well as the testimony you'll hear from applicants, professionals this evening, meet that legal standard, and prove that we are consistent with your land development code and compliant with your comprehensive plan. In addition to applicants, professionals, you also have in the record, and will hear from your city staff, and we're in agreement with staff, their detailed review of this application and the conditions that staff is proposing. Each applicant expert, again, for the record, has been previously qualified as an expert witness in this forum, and so I would ask that they be accepted today as an expert in their respective fields of expertise. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Arnold, our expert professional planner, who will walk you through the rest of the details of our pending request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I'm Wayne Arnold, certified planner with Grady Minor and Associates, and as Noel mentioned, I've appeared before city council numerous times over the past twenty years, and have been intended as an expert in planning and land use matters. So, we have on the visualizer tonight the area location map, I think you're familiar with this, the site after Hurricane Ian was razed, so the former nine units that were on the property were razed, so the site today is completely vacant, and ready for us to proceed with the new concept that we're bringing to you tonight. Just some of the facts related to the case, this is in your medium-density residential land use category, it allows eleven point six units per acre. We're seeking to downzone from the sixteen that were previously approved, and those units that were previously approved, interestingly enough, were approved under the same standard we're asking you to approve these villa units tonight, because your code specifically did not allow for multifamily as a use, but it allowed for townhome uses. And we brought in exhibits and demonstrated that you don't really know the difference of the form of ownership, the building can look the same, and it's a different form of ownership between condominium, townhouse, or a single-family home. So, that standard is allowed in your comprehensive plan under policy one point one point four, and I have that at the bottom of this page, in case anybody wants to read it, but it says that the listing of appropriate land uses in each land use category is essentially the suggested categories, but there are other uses, if they're similar in character and intensity, that can be authorized by council. So that's the policy that we're using, and that's the policy the staff has evaluated this application under for the past several months. So, as I mentioned, and I'll go to the next sheet, it's not the easiest to read, but this was the approved master plan back in two thousand and ten, and this plan identified a ten-unit multifamily building fifty feet tall that was going to be built in the center of the site, and it was going to be flanked by six additional units in the form of two-family and a detached villa. So, what we're proposing today is a series of ten detached villas, essentially, looking at them, they'll be like a single-family residence, but as you heard Mr. Davies indicate, these will be land condominiums, so each of those building will be condominium units. They're not on individual, single-family lots, they'll be sitting on one lot under a condominium ownership. So, that's something that's allowed by law, staff has recognized that, and this is not a new concept for the area. This is a color version of the plan without some of the details, but I think it just highlights that we've got a lot of green areas, we have the ten-building footprints, and then we have driveways and garages and underbuilding parking that will accommodate all the parking. And Mr. Herrera will come up shortly and take you through briefly about how the water management system will function here, because I know that you all have had some concerns from some of the neighboring residents about flooding that occurs during high tide events there. We've asked for the schedule of uses, and our opponents have attacked the term detached villas, we've defined it for your zoning ordinance, and in fact, your zoning board liked the concept and wanted to recommend through staff to you that you adopt a similar definition for your land development code, because we didn't really recognize that, but it seems like a type of unit that would be interesting. And I know that we have villas that are out there, if you go in planned developments, people sell villas, but we've defined what a detached villa is, and that you could have multiple detached villas on one parcel. We have a series of development regulations, so what we have, we had thirty-five feet, that's been the expressed height, down from fifty feet that was previously approved back in two thousand and ten, so we have thirty-five feet, and that's going to allow a building that would be potentially two stories over parking. You've been on a lot of these finger streets near the river and the bay, where people park at near grade, and then the building elevation is above those, and that's what we envision here. So, we were also told that this was somehow unique, and something that has never been done before in the city of Bonita. We compiled this list with the help of Hans Wilson, who's our environmental consultant, and has done probably a majority of the boat docking facilities in the city of Bonita Springs. And we've come up with this list, and it's numerous, of other condominium projects on the river that have multi-tenant docked facilities. I highlighted two, Brendan Cove and Dorset Harbor. Brendan Cove is a constructed project to the east side of Terry Street, it's east of US forty-one, south of Terry Street, accesses the Imperial River. They have a multi-slip docking facility, and interestingly enough, they also have, trying to get your, they have condominium units that were approved up here that have common interests in the docks that are on the water. Brendan Cove, whoops, I don't know what happened there. The Dorset Harbor project is another project that's coming back through review, it was approved several years ago, but it too has units that are not on the water, but they will have a multi-slip docking facility as well. And so you have two recent examples that are approved, they're in the ground, and they were approved using the same concept that we're using today. We have several deviations, and in combination, we think the deviations really allow us to develop these ten villas in a form that allows each of the units to be placed on the site, so that they're not impacting a neighbor. There was something to be made of the setback from the wetland to the north, and that wetland is part of the Bonita Bay Preserve, it's detached from the balance of Bonita Bay because of the river, but it's a wetland preserve, and we've coordinated with the fire district, and they have no objection that we would build closer to a preserve than your code would authorize normally, because it's a wetland, and the chance of a wildfire occurring on the river is probably very remote. These were some images of the prior development that was there, these were built back in, I don't know, the sixties and seventies likely, they were not built to flood elevation, they flooded with Ian, they were operated as a series of nine buildings that had duplexes and single-family dwellings, it was a rental community. These are some other images here, you can see the boat basin that was there, and the dock that was there. What we're proposing is essentially what you see on any of the other finger streets near the river that are being constructed, where you have parking below, and then you have two living levels above. So it's a very consistent concept with the newer homes that are being built out there, and as Mr. Davies mentioned, it is an infill project, and with the infill project, there are some nuances that have to occur, but by the same token, we're building less density than your comp plan permits, and we're building, we think, with a detached villa, a product that fits more in keeping with the neighborhood than having built a ten-unit-plus, multi-story building fifty feet in height. So, to wrap up some of my planning testimony, some of the things that are important for you to consider, we're consistent with your comprehensive plan, the RPD is more compatible with surrounding development because of the reduced density and the difference in type of unit that we're proposing. The master concept plan does meet your land development code requirements, staff has determined that it does. We have eliminated the multifamily buildings, as I indicated, but we've also reduced the number of docks, there were twelve docks previously permitted with this concept, and we're going down to ten. And then, as I mentioned before, the policy allows you to approve this detached villa type, because it is similar in character and intensity to other single-family homes that are explicitly permitted under that land use category. So we've done the traffic analysis, there are no impacts to the surrounding roadway with the reduction in intensity of the site, and the deviations that we've offered provide the setbacks in building separation that are consistent with other single-family communities, and have no harm to the neighbors, and I don't think we've had any neighboring property owner complain about any of the setbacks and changes that we've made. In fact, we added a buffer to the south and a wall, just to ensure that we had no impact on our immediate, most immediate neighbor. And then the proposed docks, I think, it seems apparent, but we need to be explicit, that what we're proposing is something that's for the exclusive use of people for this plan development, this is not going to be operated as a marina, these are not going to be rental units, rental docks, they are for the explicit use of the ten-unit owners for ten docks. So with that, I'll conclude, and I think, happy to answer any additional questions you may have that are more specific, I wanted to give you a lot of the high-level facts regarding the case. I'm prepared to have Michael Herrera come up and talk a little bit about the stormwater management system, if you don't mind, I'll let Michael approach.
Good evening, Michael Herrera, a civil engineer, licensed in the state of Florida, been practicing in this area for over twenty years. So, I'm here to talk about your favorite thing, stormwater management, and so the existing site is now been cleared, for intensive purpose, it's undeveloped, meaning that when stormwater flows, it currently discharges either into the river or into Big Bend Road. As you can see the image on the screen, I tried to identify areas that, we're not in development order process yet, so this is conceptual in nature, but once we get into the actual engineering and design of it, this may increase, decrease, fluctuate slightly, but the purple areas that are on the screen are the areas that would be utilized for dry retention. It would service the site, and what happens is, I'll go to the next slide, I think it kind of explains to it a little bit better. So, on pretty much any undeveloped site, there is uncontrolled discharge currently onsite, meaning water flows into the right-of-way, uncontrolled, or into the river, uncontrolled. The, there is, as everyone is aware, drainage issues along Big Bend Road. My understanding with discussions with the city, they're currently evaluating, conducting a study on the right-of-way to try to implement some solutions to mitigate some of that flooding. The Big Bend, Big Bend Road that's directly abutting our property is about elevation one point five, our site is about elevation two point five approximately, so therefore, water, higher, lower, runs, some of it runs under the right-of-way, and some of it runs into the river. FEMA flood elevation for the site is AE ten, so you can imagine the flood elevation versus what the existing grade, that's a significant difference. Under the, under the proposed condition, the site will be in compliance with, you know, local, state, and federal guidelines when it comes to stormwater management, so we have to submit to the South Florida Water Management District, and also to the city of Bonita Springs. Underneath the proposed condition, this site will have regulated discharge rates, meaning not only, independent of where it discharges, if it's to the river, to the right-of-way, it'll have less flow, discharging, offsite and post-condition than it does in precondition. More specifically, though, is that there's going to be a perimeter berm that we're required to construct to create a basin around this, this project. That basin has, and that berm, will not allow discharge to flow into the right-of-way, so under post-condition, there will be less water, really, no water, up to that berm elevation, discharging into the right-of-way versus the existing condition where it is uncontrolled and discharges into that right-of-way. Under, under our proposed condition, there will be a one-control structure somewhere in that detention area that will discharge directly into the Imperial River, so no water goes into the, into the right-of-way. That, that control structure will regulate both water quality, nutrient loading, and attenuation for the site, and our client has allocated a portion on this property that is available to the city in terms of a drainage easement, should the city need an easement to cross from the right-of-way to the Imperial River to try to make some improvements for the right-of-way drainage system. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Hans Wilson, I am a licensed professional engineer, I've been doing re-engineering and environmental consulting projects for about forty years in southwest Florida. Let's see, how do we get to Ford here? There we go, multi-slip docking facilities. Multi-slip docking facilities are very common in Lee County, they're very common in the city of Bonita Springs. Of this list, which is not all of them, I've worked on probably half of those projects in some fashion, whether it was actually creating the boat slips for those developments, or coming in for maintenance dredging permits, or some, some fashion, or some action associated with that facility. The one thing that's in common with almost all of those is that they have multi-slip docks that are adjacent to common element lands that every property owner in that development has rights to use. And in many cases, those docks are placed on sometimes private submerged lands, sometimes public submerged lands. In our project, we have a mix, the interior marina basin is privately owned, it's been excavated from uplands, we've been able to demonstrate that, but part of the docks are still going to be subject to submerged land lease with the state of Florida. Multi, multi-slip docking facilities, the, really, the biggest thing that you have to think about before you even get started on a project is how do you fit within the Lee County Manatee Protection Plan, which is applicable in the city of Bonita Springs? And the way that the county looks at your rights to a And the way that the county looks at your rights to a boat slip is based solely on how many linear feet of shoreline you have, if it's an undeveloped piece, or do you have previous entitlements that predated the manatee protection plan in 2004? So in this particular case, it's the linear footage and how this site ranks in terms of impacts to manatees, based on manatee mortality, manatee abundance. And in this location, based on your linear footage of shoreline, we qualify for 25 boat slips. Now, obviously, this is a residential development. It's been proposed for 10 units, and by way of the rules with the state, we're limited to 10 boat slips. And that can be placed on a single dock where you might have two slips per dock. It's very common to share a dock with that type of situation. We're also subject to state permitting with the South Florida Water Management District because the slips are an accessory use to the principal upland development. And the 10 slips that we've proposed is really the minimal amount. When I originally permitted this project before, we had actually received permits from the state and federal agencies for 12 boat slips on this site, following much the same development plan. This has been a downsizing. So, and one other thing to mention is that there is a boat ramp in that basin that is usable, and with the elimination of that boat ramp, we basically have shut the door so that we only have 10 slips, would be the maximum that would ever be built on that property. Otherwise, boat ramp, you know, under the current or when was previously being operated as a rental facility with nine units and I think one large building and a boat ramp, there was no limit on how many boats you could launch out of that harbor and take out into the Imperial River. So I think in this respect, this is really a downsizing. 10 slips is not an inordinate amount of boat slips and is suitable for the location. We meet all the state and federal criteria for encroachment into the waterway. We're actually much less because we're in the aquatic preserve. We have a much higher standard that we have to meet being in the aquatic preserve. So that's it.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. That concludes applicant's formal presentation. I'm here for your questions. The experts are here for your questions, and we would respectfully reserve the right to rebut any public comment.
How high is your berm around the property?
Like, how high is the berm?
Roughly two and a half feet. Not calculating.
Mike? So the calculations haven't, haven't been completed yet. That'll be part of the development order process, but roughly, if you look at other projects about that size, pervious and pervious ratios, we expect it to be about two feet above the existing elevation.
The existing elevation is a foot?
Existing elevation is around two and a half NAVD.
And the road is a one and a half?
One and a half NAVD.
And the mangrove swamp is?
I didn't look over there, but I imagine it's, it's a mangrove, so it's got to be a little bit lower than one and a half.
That's, that's the situation is, you know, you get a four, you get a three-foot tide, so.
Right.
We're all going to be swimming, so that's, that's my biggest problem, is the flooding problem.
Yeah, there's not much difference in elevation from high tide versus the elevation of the road. That's, that's what the road was built to.
Okay, that's my question. Any more? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. I will try and keep this somewhat short and sweet, but obviously, there are some things that I would like to clarify as well. The applicant did a good job with their portion of the clarification, so we'll just get right into it. As always, just a shout out to the staff review team. As you can see, we, we put all these applications through their paces. This, these decisions aren't made in a vacuum, so we have everything from bike peg compliance, the city surveyor, engineers, environmental, traffic, public works. These are all the entities that looked at and made comments on this application as it went through its paces. The location map, I think at this point, we're all familiar with where we are, so we can go ahead and, and skip through that, even though I gave you a little, a little bit more zoomed-in area, just to see, once again, where we are. You have the mangrove area to the north, Imperial River to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, Big Ben Road and to the east, along with some single-family homes, and then single-family development to the south. And as you know, the request language, to amend that 2010-approved RPD to allow up to 10 detached villas, boat docks, other accessory uses, and to add five deviations, which we will get into in greater detail here. So again, with some of the background, yes, the property was rezoned in 2010 for 16 units. It was approved by city council as part of ordinance 10-02. It allowed for a variety of unit types, including single-family, two-family, townhouse, and multifamily. The development based on that approved MCP was never completed. The existing duplex structures, as you heard from Wayne, were severely damaged by Hurricane Ian, and essentially those, what was left of those units were demolished, and the site has been vacant ever since. The application came in for an amendment to the PD to reduce the density down from 16 units down to 10 units, and to amend the schedule of uses to accommodate what they called a detached villa. And again, with that, with that detached villa use, that was something that staff wanted clarification on what they meant by that, because it's not a well-defined, it's not a defined use in your land development code currently, but it doesn't prohibit them from providing a definition so that we can do our analysis to see if there's something compatible within the code that would allow for that type of use. So the definition that they gave is made part of your ordinance. It's in your schedule of uses, and staff did review it and analyze it under several sections of the LDC for compatibility and determined that it was compatible with allowable uses elsewhere in your code and in the city. So because of that, we allowed the detached villa use to be included on the schedule of uses. With regard to the development regs, you have a copy of those in your draft ordinance. Again, it does remove the, the single-family, two-family, multifamily, and accessory structure uses, and instead replaces them with the, I'm sorry, it doesn't remove the accessory structure uses, it amends the accessory structure uses, but it does remove the single-family, two-family, and multifamily uses and replaces them with detached villa uses. So as you saw from Wayne, this is a zoomed-in copy, if you will, of the previous master concept plan that was approved as part of ordinance 10-02, and you can see what, what was being talked about before, where you had the, the multifamily 10-unit building that was essentially directly abutting Big Ben Road that was flanked on the sides by additional development, and then with the location of the docks and boat slips here. So the goal was to go from that to what ultimately ended up being something like this, which is a reduction in density, down from six, from 16 down to 10, with the design parameters that they are meant to look like single-family homes. And there's actually a condition of approval that was agreed to by the applicant that's going to require them to provide architectural renderings when they come in for development orders. And just to make that clear, it's not very common that we ask for architectural renderings for single-family homes. It's, it's not a standard that we have. In fact, it's not in your Chapter 3 section of the development code that requires architectural renderings for single-family homes. But just to make sure and to be clear that we are approving this because of how consistent and similar it is to single-family development, we asked them if they'd be willing to provide architectural renderings as part of the engineering process so that we can verify that, yes, these are designed to look like single-family homes, and the applicant has agreed to do that. So you do have that condition that's built into your ordinance. With regards to the deviations, there are five new deviations being requested for a total of six, because there was one carryover from the previous ordinance. Deviation one has to do with any time that you have a driveway or a roadway that's located within 125 feet of existing residential areas. You're supposed to help offset some of that impact by providing for a berm or a berm-wall combination. Really, it's used to help deter headlight glare, so if there's an area where you're going to be approaching an existing single-family area that's already been developed and there's going to be a risk of constant headlight glare based on the way the road or driveways are being configured, this helps to offset that impact and protect that impact. The reason why they requested a deviation wasn't because they didn't want to do it, it was because the current code requires that you have that wall and berm locate at least 25 feet away from the property line. If they located it at least 25 feet away from the property line, it would eat into the area of the first two units there on the south. So these units would essentially be removed or be probably somewhere right in here. And what they're saying is, you know, because this function's more like a single-family home anyway, it's not the big 10-unit multifamily building that was approved previously, it's more in line with what's there now. The applicant, their position was, we're willing to do it, but can we do it a little bit closer to the property line? Staff didn't see a problem with that because they weren't requesting to not do it, and they weren't requesting any type of deviation from the planting standards that are associated with that berm and berm-wall combo. So essentially, they're going to be meeting all of those requirements, and because of that, we didn't see an issue with it. There was a previous reduction that was approved as part of the prior ordinance from that 25-foot setback anyway. It was from 25 feet down to 15 feet. What they're asking for is to go to 10 feet and to allow ample room for the development, but then again, like I said, still meet all the buffering requirements and all the planting requirements within that area. So that, that south side of the property, which is where the biggest perceived impact would be, is going to be shielded with the wall and landscape combination. Deviation two is a carryover from the previous ordinance. It had to do, it had to do with model homes, and essentially, it was making sure that the model homes would be permitted without having to go through some type of separate administrative process. Again, it was a carryover. They're still requesting the model homes. We have conditions in this ordinance related to regulating the model home, so because of that, no issues there, it's just a carryover. Deviation three has to do with LDC 3-417, and that has to do with a requirement from a preserve or a wildland area. In your land development code right now, there is a setback of 30 feet required from a preserve or a wildland area. And what they're requesting is a 10-foot setback instead of 30 feet. Now, on its face, that probably seems like a, a pretty big ask, but when you read through that section of the land development code, that code section does not prohibit a lesser setback. What it says is that if you're going for a lesser setback, you have to provide a wildland mitigation plan, and that plan has to be reviewed and approved by the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. They've already done some of the legwork ahead of time and have already spoken with the fire control district and have gotten their blessing for the reduced setback. They'll have to provide that plan again at time of local development order for us to review, and then that's also when the fire department will get a second crack at it to go ahead and review that wildland mitigation plan. So again, because, you know, as the applicant stated, it's a mangrove swamp, there's a low risk of fire, and they've already agreed to provide the plan, because of that, staff didn't see an issue with that particular deviation. The next deviation, oh, sorry, I'm going backwards here. The next deviation has to do with the right-of-way buffer. Typically, there's a requirement for a 15-foot-wide right-of-way buffer, which would have to be installed adjacent to Big Ben Road, and what they're requesting is to allow one tree per right-of-way abutting unit, plus plantings in the detention area, but no buffer adjacent to the mangroves. Portion of that right-of-way area has their onsite mangrove area, and what they're saying is, do we really need to plant against existing mangroves? So we kind of understood where they were coming from with that. The mangroves are there, they're being protected, they're going to be preserved in perpetuity, so we didn't see an issue with that, per se. And again, and they're doing this for a couple reasons. One was, there is an attempt, if you read their justification, to have a, some type of unified appearance with the existing homes that are there in terms of the amount of landscaping that's already there and present in the existing area, and also to help preserve certain view corridors of the waterway as well. And they are going to still have front yard canopy trees and things like that, so it's not a lack of landscaping, we're really just talking about the right-of-way buffer. They provided a right-of-way buffer planting plan as an example of what they thought it could look like. Staff didn't go so far as to say that we're over-the-moon crazy about that plan. Instead, what we are suggesting is that we understand that there is a drainage issue out there, and we understand that there, there is an opportunity to improve the drain situation out there. And at that time, the negotiations were still ongoing between the property owner and public works in terms of whether or not some type of easement can be obtained on the applicant's property, probably for a control structure or something like that, to help offset some of the drainage impacts that have been just inundating that area for a while. Well, there's a good chance that that easement area would probably be somewhere within that right-of-way buffer. So because of that, and because we wanted to allow a situation that allowed for those negotiations to continue, we were okay with this deviation, but it's subject to those negotiations with public works and coming to some type of understanding that it's mutually beneficial for both parties to come to an agreement on some type of easement or something along those lines where additional infrastructure can be utilized to help offset some of the drainage concerns. The next deviation is very similar to deviation three in that it was a setback from a, the wildland and preserve buffer. It was just a different portion of the preserve area, so they called it out by a separate deviation. And this specific deviation, deviation five, would only apply to one specific unit overall. And again, because they've agreed to provide a wildland mitigation plan, because that's what the code allows them to do in terms of getting approval for a less restrictive setback, staff was okay with it, but again, it's subject to that mitigation plan being approved by Benita Fire. And the sixth deviation has to do with a perimeter setback. Typically, for these planned developments, there's a perimeter setback requirement of 15 feet, and what they are requesting was a less restrictive setback for three buildings, Buildings 1, 7, and 10. Didn't see an issue with Buildings 1 and 10 specifically because those buildings are adjacent to the mangrove preserve. So again, there, there's no visual impact on the neighboring property because the neighboring property to those two buildings is a mangrove preserve. And then also with Building 10, it's adjacent to Big Ben Road, and it's a dead-end right-of-way there, too. The big thing there was that making sure that the, the building separations between structures were going to be adhered to, and also making sure that the impact on the south side, which is where the other portion of this deviation comes from, was going to be offset. And it is going to be offset because if you remember from a few slides ago, that's where they're going to put the wall and the berm and the landscaping. So because we felt that they did an adequate job of offsetting what would be the impacts for that particular requirement, staff didn't see an issue approving that deviation, given those circumstances. So that, that concludes the deviation portion of the, of the project. Moving on to the environmental components, you heard from Hans, who gave his environmental assessment, and he provided a very detailed environmental impact statement and study that our environmental specialists reviewed. They do have a very small onsite mangrove area. It is contiguous to the adjacent mangrove area to the north that is owned by Benita Bay as part of their off-site mitigation requirements, and the applicant is going to preserve their onsite area. Again, with the less restrictive setback, that's subject to the Fire Control and Rescue District mitigation plan being approved. And just generally, overall, the landscape planting requirements will be met, even on the south side where that wall's going to be a little bit closer to 25 feet, the landscaping standards are going to be met. The only area where, again, it's sort of up in the air is what to do along that front right-of-way area for the buffer, but that's going to come with the negotiations between the city, the applicant, public works on creating a suitable easement area for drainage. And there's also additional environmental review that was done as part of the comprehensive plan portion, which we'll get to in a few slides. With the stormwater, you heard from Mike Herrera. The project is required to contain, treat, and discharge its own stormwater. As you saw from their plan, they are proposing onsite retention areas. And again, just sort of tying into that is, you know, the, the flooding of the roadway itself. Well, that's why public works has an existing and active project out there right now to help deal with those types of issues. And again, that's why we have that condition in the ordinance about requiring negotiations with public works to help offset some of these issues. and make this more mutually beneficial. Overall, the project can't negatively impact the historic flows, nor can it cause more additional runoff or discharge onto the neighboring properties. So these are all things that are just, you know, hard lines in the sand that need to be accommodated and dealt with. And when they get to the development order stage, should this be approved, they'll have to provide additional details and, and a more detailed stormwater plan for review. With regards to traffic, the city's traffic engineer did review the traffic impacts associated with the project. There was actually a table in the TIS that showed the comparison from the 2010 approval of 16 units to what's being approved, to what could be approved now under this plan with the 10 units. One of the things that we look at as a city is, we call it the percent of impact. And the way it's written into our code is that if a project has more than a 2% impact to the associated roadway segments and roadway network, it's considered a project of significant impact, and it needs to be addressed that way. The impact of this project is less than 1%. So it's not considered a project of significant impact, and the, the city's traffic engineer agreed with the, the facts and figures and computations that were reviewed and provided by the applicant as part of this project. The applicant is aware that they may need to do some additional improvements to Big Bend. They're aware they need to build a sidewalk, for an example. They're aware that depending on the negotiations with Public Works, they may need to do a little bit more. And these are all things that the applicant understands and has agreed to. In terms of the comprehensive plan consistency, the future land use is medium-density residential. That is a land use that allows you to develop up to 11.6 dwelling units per acre. What they're asking, because they're at about an acre and a half, give or take, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 6.6 units per acre. So they're, they're not going all the way up to the max. From the staff standpoint, it's a more reasonable approach to density for the area, even though their comprehensive plan would have allowed them to ask for more. It is a comprehensive plan category that allows for single-family and duplex structures built on permanent foundations. There is a policy, it's Policy 1.1.4 in your comprehensive plan, that has to do with allowable uses. And it's a policy that allows the city to review uses that have similar character and intensity to approved uses. So that was one of the sections that the city utilized when reviewing the detached villa concept to, to gauge the similarity between that and the single-family uses that are already approved. With regards to your transportation element of a comprehensive plan, I know we just went over traffic, but it fronts a constructed roadway. They're aware that they need to put in the sidewalk infrastructure. They're aware that additional improvements may be necessary. And as far as the housing element goes, it's located in a residential future land use category. It's surrounded by residential future land uses and existing residential uses. So there's no conflict in terms of being compatible with what's around it. It's a residential project that's being asked on a residential future land use category. Also tying into that, we reviewed the coastal high hazard and the coastal management area. The density is decreasing. So that's always a good thing when you're talking about development in a coastal high hazard area, the density decreasing down from, from 16 units down to 10 units. The project is obviously required to design to FEMA standards, Florida building standards, for how you develop in these coastal areas and these hazard areas, these flood zones, things like that. The onsite conservation areas, they're going to be maintained. There is going to be some adjustment to the lake contour, which I think you heard from the previous, from the applicant. It's also on the master concept plan. The area of contour that they're looking to reshape is considered artificial anyway. It was man-made, but it will require additional permitting. So this does not circumvent their need to have to go through the respective entities for permitting, whether that's Army Corps, DEP, so on and so forth. So they're still going to have to go through and do those things. So there were some issues, obviously, that were raised at the zoning board and that were raised at the, the first reading that had to do with this particular project. And, you know, some of the assertions that were made were that it was an incomplete application because there were no lot lines. The number of stories weren't shown on the MCP. There were certain conditions that were removed from the zoning ordinance. You know, why did that happen? Issues with deviations 1, 4, 5, and 6 because there isn't enough justification for those deviations. And that the number of boat docks seems to be excessive. And, and so I can go through and I can address some of those things in a very high level. If you want more details or have more questions or want to probe further, we're happy to do that, and I'm sure the applicant is as well. I think one of the big things to do first and foremost is to understand what the purpose of a planned development is. So the code allows planned developments in an effort to allow, there's a few different reasons why. But the big thing about planned developments is that it allows for design flexibility. And it allows an applicant to provide a plan or a proposal that might differ from what's already in your conventional code. It's one of the ways that you increase density on a property. And again, that, that is important because you have a future land use plan that's required of you by the Growth Management Act of the State of Florida. And it has to deal with how you, it, it stems from how you deal with a growing population and the need for additional housing opportunities, additional business opportunities, so on and so forth. So in certain areas where you're talking about infill development, where you have development on all sides of you or where you're somewhat restricted by a certain development parameters, the planned development process exists for you to be able to provide some type of plan and development pattern for that property. And it's one of those things where, you know, like I said, it, it allows you to essentially provide your own development regulations. You provide a concept for how you want to lay out the property. It goes through its paces like we do with every one of these applications, and you vote accordingly on that. And also built into the, to the planned development standards itself, and it's Section 4-739, that also allows you to look at similar uses. So when you look at the planned development section of the code, it provides a table of uses that the city generally thinks are consistent and allowable within planned developments. And it could be a residential planned development, commercial planned development, industrial planned development. Doesn't matter. It runs the gamut. There's a table in there that provides uses for what they consider to be consistent with those planned developments. Built into that section, just like your comp plan, is that if it's something that's not on this list, but if it's similar to this list, and it, the, the determination of similarity is given by the director, which in this case would be John, then it can be considered an approved use. So again, those were the sections that we utilized when we reviewed this detached villa concept. So again, these decisions weren't made in a vacuum. We reviewed the land development code. We reviewed the comprehensive plan. We looked at what we were allowed to do and working with the applicant on this particular approach and came to that specific decision. With regards to the lot lines, as you heard from the applicant early on, they're going to be doing a condominium form of ownership, which means there really aren't lots, per se. It's the building itself that is going to serve as the function of ownership, which is, again, again, that, that is something that, that is allowed, and that's not, that's not new to the city. One of the projects that you heard the applicant speak about and Wayne speak about was Brendan Cove. Brendan Cove is a project that is located east of 41 and south of Terry Street. And there is, in the Brendan Cove PD, again, it's an RPD, they call it single-family condominium, but it's the same thing. There are no lots. It is, the building itself serves as the point of ownership. And at the south end of that planned development are the boat docks and boat slips that serve that development. So it's not done where only the properties that are above the water have access to those boat docks. It's, the, the approval was granted for the project as a whole. So that's one example. Another example is Dorset Harbor, which you also heard about before. They're actually in for an amendment right now, so I don't want to talk too much about that one. But what was approved previously was a communal multi-slip dock area for the residents. I think it was eight or 10 docks at the time. But it was clear that those were designed to accommodate other properties within the project, not just the one that, that, that was on the water bodies. So the concept itself to doing it that way isn't new from our perspective. I think another thing that we can probably touch on is the, the conditions that were removed from the original zoning ordinance. So a lot's changed in your land development code since 2010. It's been 14 years. The simple answer is that a lot of those things that were originally written into your 2010 ordinance are no longer needed because they've been codified in the land development code. So they're requirements anyway. And for example, there was a, a, a condition in there that required, you know, making sure that you get permitting with all the respective agencies for your docks, your seawalls, things like that. Well, that, that's in the codes. They're going to have to do that anyway. There was a, a condition in there about compliance with the sign code if they were going to put up signs. Well, that's a requirement anyway, that you have to comply with the sign code unless you're asking for a deviation from it. So a lot of the, the conditions that were pulled, were pulled because the conventional code already accommodates them. And since they're not asking for deviations from those sections, it's a bit repetitious to keep them in there. If it makes council happy for us to put them back in, I don't think there's an issue doing that in terms of what staff feels. I'm sure the applicant wouldn't disagree with it either. It's just a little repetitive in nature in that regard. With regards to the deviations, I, I think all, I'm going to let that stand as it does in the staff report. You have the applicant's justification for those deviations verbatim, which is why it's italicized. It was lifted directly from their narrative. You have the staff response to those deviations and justifications, and you have the staff recommendations based on that. With regards to the, the boat docks and the number being excessive, I think I would first point out that marina is not on their schedule of uses. They are not proposing a marina. I assure you, if they were proposing a marina, this would be looked at very differently. And when you look at what the definition of a marina is, what they're proposing doesn't meet that definition, which is why it's not on there because that, that marinas, or that definition specifically says that the term marina does not apply to docks, davids, boat houses, and similar facilities pertinent to a residential land use providing only dockage or mooring to the residents or to any city or county-owned boat ramp or docking facility. And as you heard from the applicant, these boat docks are going to be tied to the residential units for use by the residents only. So because of that, it doesn't meet the definition of a marina. And again, it's, it's not on there, and they're not going to be for sale. They're not going to be for rent. They're not going to be for commercial use. So I hope that, that kind of helps that aspect of it. With regards to the docks themselves, you heard that they were requesting 10, so one per unit. One of the code requirements that we have, and it's Section 7-357 in your land development code, which has to do with any time you want to put more than four slips on a piece of property. We have a requirement that you go through Lee County and demonstrate consistency and compliance with their manatee protection plan, which is a, a pretty big deal. And there, and there's a lot of criteria that go into the calculations that you do with Lee County with regards to their manatee protection plan. And the reason why that's key is because one of those calculations that's done is a determination of the maximum number of boat slips. And in this case, they went through Lee County, they dealt with the manatee protection plan, and it was determined that they could have up to 25 boat slips based on those standards. They're asking for 10, one per unit. And, and I think that's key because when you look at what the screening criteria are for this manatee protection plan that they have to go through, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty intense. You know, you, you got to provide data on manatee mortality, manatee abundance, the project proximity to warm water refugia, proximity to speed zones, you know, are you expanding an existing facility? Is this going to be new? Proximity to passes and open water. They have to make a, a payment to the manatee protection fund to help offset some of the impact of the additional boats. That's something that standalone, single-family docks don't have to do, by the way. They have to pay for additional signage for manatee zones and additional literature and things like that. And again, these are things that just standard, run-of-the-mills, single-family boat docks don't have to do. They have to provide detailed calculations of the water depth. They have to provide these measurements in detail to the county as part of this protection plan, and that's how these decisions are made. So we felt pretty comfortable that the fact that they went through that process. The county came back and said up to 25 would be permissible based on these calculations. They're asking for 10. So we, again, we, we, we felt that was, that, that was okay. We didn't see the issue with it at that point. So with that, you know, I'm going to go ahead and essentially shut it down here. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment as conditioned in the staff report. You have your conditions of approval that are outlined in the ordinance. I'll go over them just briefly for you. General consistency with the master concept plan, that's always a big one. Understand that you're bound by the schedule of uses, which if approved, would allow that detached villa concept up to 10 units. The revised property development regulations for this project overall. Condition four is a big one. That's the one that requires coordination with community development, Public Works, and the property owner on the additional drainage infrastructure and potential drainage improvements that would help some of those drainage impacts on Big Bend Road specifically. The environmental conditions, many of those are similar to ordinance, the original ordinance 10-02 with regards to a heritage tree survey, the manatee protection stuff, which we already covered. The, they are proposing a new conservation easement, and we do have a requirement for them to record the new conservation easement. And again, you have requirements for native vegetation, planting plans, et cetera, all written into the environmental conditions. The model home standards, we're tying it so that only one of those units could be used as a real estate sales office. So you can have several models. If you're proposing more than one model for the project overall, you're allowed to build one of each. But only one of them can house the real estate sales office with the hours consistent for both. We also have a requirement for renderings at time of local development order, again, to verify this, this single-family concept that they're proposing. The right-of-way planting plan, which again, we're going to have that come at time of local development order because as we said, we weren't sold on the one that was provided to us initially mainly because we wanted to allow those additional negotiations to take place with Matt and his team. Compliance with federal, state, local regulations, flood ordinance, so on and so forth. These are all just sort of blanket conditions. And I think the big one is that approval of this zoning concept does not guarantee approval of a development order or a building permit. So this does not circumvent their need to have to go through the permitting process, whether it's with us, whether it's with DEP, the Army Corps. They still have to go through those processes. So approving this doesn't circumvent that. If you feel that there's need for additional conditions or for staff to clarify some of these existing conditions, we're happy to have that discussion with you. But with that, if you have any questions of me, I'm here. My staff is here. We have Brent Spain participating virtually. He's staff's counsel, so we're here.
Yes, Mike, what's the footprint on this property? You don't know?
The, I'm sorry, the footprint?
The footprint.
In terms of the size of the?
The open space?
Yep. So that, that's on your master concept plan on there. There's. They have to have a minimum of 40% open space overall. I, I think.
Are the driveways permissible?
Are the driveways permeable in terms of those paver driveways?
Are they part of the open space?
I don't know if we've gotten to that level in terms of what the driveways are going to be.
Because I don't see 40% of, you know, you got, you're downsizing the number of units. You haven't put a size on each of these houses. It's going to be a lot, you could have a much bigger footprint.
Well, not necessarily. So it's going to be one of those things where the footprint can be bigger in terms of them building multiple stories. But in terms of the on-the-ground footprint, you know, obviously, yes, that eats into their open space. So when they come in for their development order permit, they need to clearly define the building envelope areas because that's going to directly equate to the open space requirements that they have.
You got 10-foot setbacks from each other.
Correct.
You don't know whether the driveways are permeable or not. I see the sidewalk's supposed to be permeable.
Well, they, they haven't, they haven't provided the detailed engineering on the driveways yet in terms of the type of material that they're going to use. They'll be using, they'll be providing that at time of development order.
Okay. And how about this drainage easement? Where, where, where are you going to put that through? I don't understand. You can put that on the, on the south line? You got to get to the river.
So as of right now, if you look at their master concept plan, they're proposing a control structure that's to the west of the units, so heading towards the river. And that, that's going to be the main focal point for all. And that's gonna be the main focal point for all the stormwater in the area. Where there may be room for additional drainage infrastructure would be more towards the front, to help offset some of the issues with Big Ben Road. And that's why we have that condition in there about the applicant needing to meet with Matt and his team to come up with a suitable location and a solution for that portion.
Okay, what else I got here? How about complete streets? You don't have any room for that, do you?
Oh, no, they're gonna have to build a sidewalk. Yep, we mentioned that, that's part of the complete streets, is they're gonna have to build a sidewalk within the right-of-way, it's gonna have to be built to city standards. They are aware of that, and they've agreed to it.
You don't know what a drainage easement is gonna be?
Not the one in the front, because again, that one's gonna be worked out with public works.
Okay, so the people that have written up this development, I mean, this right to build, they're saying people are gonna make sure they can build it?
I'm not sure what you mean by the people that have written up the right to build.
You know, you went through 300 pages, you know, with setbacks and all these other things so that the people could build on this property. Now, you're gonna be in charge of the development order also?
Well, I mean, that's gonna be up to the applicant if they wanna use a different team to do the development order engineering plans, but they're gonna be, if you approve this ordinance, they're gonna be bound by the conditions in the concept plan that's in this ordinance. So they're gonna have to use that as their template for their engineering plans regardless of who does it.
Okay, any other?
Could we hear public comment first? We haven't heard the other side.
While he's here, Chris?
So basically, Mike, all we're doing here is approving a concept with some deviations in it, and that concept, if we approve it, will then drive the next step, which are coming up with detailed engineering plans for purposes of permits, and for purposes of getting towards a land development order. I mean, there's all sorts of checks and balances from this point forward, right?
You are correct.
Any other questions, how about public comment?
Thank you.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in this item, you would have, please come up to the podium if you filled out a card, we'll call you from the city clerk, and you'll have four minutes. Mr. Lewis? And I believe, Mr. Lewis, you are asking to add your time from several members of the public. Did those members provide sheets to the city clerk?
I'll read the names, and they can indicate if they plan to cede their time. Wolfgang Oster. Bradley Wind. Rosemary Wind. G.G. Clifford. Tom Slaughter. Max Forghey. And the last speaker was Douglas Lewis.
It's four minutes each?
There's one more.
Did you fill out a slip?
If you could, just for our purposes, Mr., I couldn't, sorry, the last name, Lou, if you could fill a slip out, that would give a total for the, I believe, 32 minutes?
Yep, it would be, yes, 10 minutes.
Why is he limited in his time? Because his public comment?
Public comment, so what Mr. Mayor just said is the first reading, all the members of the public who are ceding their time to Mr. Lewis to give the presentation, so that's how we've got to that time limit.
The public has time limits where the presentation doesn't have a time limit?
Correct, the parties versus the public.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I guess you're ready to roll.
You're ready, I'm gonna start a clock on.
Good morning, actually, we're now in the afternoon, members of city council for the record, my name is Doug Lewis, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Thompson Lewis at 745 12th Avenue South, Suite 105, Naples, Florida. As stated at the first hearing, I represent Mr. Wolfgang Oster and Somax LLC, they're the owner, he's the owner of a single-family home located at 27381 Oaknall Drive, and it's directly on the opposite side of the river, the project. I have with me today Mr. Max Forghey, if you can come up. He's a well-respected AICP planner, he has over 30 years of experience, who has been recognized at our first hearing as a expert. We also have today on our team Mr. Tom Slaughter. Tom has a master's degree from Florida State University in urban and regional planning. I have presented over to clerks and binders pursuant to your policy with respect to documentation at these meetings. In there, in tab three, you can find his CV report, I've also provided a copy of his CV report to the applicant. And I'd like to proffer Mr. Slaughter as an expert witness in urban and regional planning for today's discussion.
Time's ticking.
Okay, no objections, I'll move forward. In the interest of time, I'll ask that our entire record from our communications with staff at the first hearing, the zoning board, and all of the records, including those presented today, that you carefully consider what we're gonna share with you, what we've shared with you as you make your decision. There are objections, there's demands, there's claims, we are fully asserting those, and we're reasserting those today. We've also raised objections and connections with the requested deviations that we really don't feel benefit the community, that certainly helped the intensity of the project, but we don't see that they're justified. We also have asked for the return of the 18-plus conditions that were in the prior plan development. As a reminder, this is not a downzoning, nothing can be developed as a matter of right, it's not a downzoning, in our opinion. Under the existing zoning ordinance and pursuant to section 4-303 of the land development code, the master concept plan for the existing RPD ordinance 10-02 has expired, and the property remains zoned, certainly zoned, but no development can occur under the current master concept plan as the prior concept plan has expired. So you have a lot of flexibility today to do your job and protect the community and protect your comp plan and your code. The owner did buy the property knowing that he had the zoning risk and went forward and took that risk. The established record confirms that the applicant's rebuttal is not supported by competent substantial evidence in the record, and I'll get into particulars relative to those issues. As you're aware, my client is aggrieved and he's adversely affected, he has standing in this matter, and he will suffer special injury if the application gets approved. Each of you and the applicant, again, have a binder, that, again, it's additional supplemental binder. In that binder, it contains a supplemental memorandum that I provided in reaction to information I received on Friday from Mike Fegan. It was the revised ordinance, also I received on, it was actually yesterday, within 24 hours of the hearing, I received an amended, some other amended RPD ordinance language, and then also the master concept plan that we've been looking at for over, well over a month now, for quite, you know, six to eight weeks, but it's been a while. I received that on Friday. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about the revised master concept plan as well. We do, as for the matter of record, we do object to that. We were also delayed in getting our reply back, because I had to get it, review it, see what they did, and then try to get some answers to you, which I provided for you today. Although the attorney has denied the request, I just must, for the record, reassert our right, that we've requested the right to intervene as a party participant to be able to rebut the applicant cross-examine witnesses. We reserve any rights that we had pertaining to that request, which was denied, and also pertaining to the non-timely delivery of the revised concept plan that we did receive. So with that, I wanted to have the opportunity to introduce to you Mr. Max Forghey, I'd like for him to talk to you a little bit about the unique aspects of your code, how your code tries to position development in certain areas within your city. And really, the way I like to look at a comp plan is that your city is built on the back of a good comp plan. And so people are incentivized to make business decisions based on how you outline and lay out your comprehensive plan. So I'm gonna have Max come and talk to you a little bit about that, and some of the planning aspects that pertain to the application.
Thank you, Max Forghey, 236 Southeast 45th Street, Cape Coral, doing business as Forghey Planning LLC. I've been sworn. The first thing that I'm concerned with is that you're using this hearing to essentially amend your comprehensive plan and your land development code to introduce a new land use category, new zoning category of detached villa, which is not defined in your comprehensive plan or your land development code. And detached villa is not a use that is, that I've seen in literature. It doesn't appear, for instance, in the Illustrated Book of Development Definitions, which I use all the time. And, so, this is not the ordinary way to introduce a land use plan, the land use category. The ordinary way is to go through the comprehensive plan amendment process, which you have. I have written it at some length in the report which you received at your last hearing on the way in which this, you're introducing individual buildings that are not located on lots, this is very unusual. I think this is an irregular process. I don't really have a whole lot new to say.
Thank you. Thank you, we're gonna invite Tom now to make his presentation on the planning aspects of the project.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Tom Slaughter for the record, I'm with Cape Land. I'm a land use planner, have a master's in urban planning from Florida State, spent 20 years in local government, 14 certified through American Institute of Certified Planner. I'm also a licensed realtor, and I run my own veteran-owned land planning company. When I looked at this original project, one of the things that really jumped out, two things, was one, it's an ambitious project, you know, to acquire land, tear it down, reassemble it, that's difficult. So when I started going through the plan, as Max indicated, my first thought was, this project just isn't ripe yet. And I state that because at each phase, there's been more and more information added to the document, and that's been an incredible burden for the applicant, not just the applicant, but the members of the public who are now trying to follow that bouncing ball. So does this tonight reflect the final, final version, or are we gonna see more iterations? And I state that because when you go through section 4-295A6, it talks about those things needing to be there. And the easiest way to explain it is, think about a checklist, you're not evaluating the qualitative aspects, but the quantitative, do you have this, do you have this, do you have this? And your staff planner even indicated, there have been a number of revisions. But the other thing that jumped out was, when I originally looked at it, detached villas, Max indicated, there's no definition of that. But the land planner for the applicant indicated, it had such strong support that your local planning agency thought, maybe this is a good idea, and it might be. But you've had this project for two years, so the question becomes, why haven't you updated your comprehensive plan? Put the enabling language in there, include references to this detached villa that might or might not be a multifamily marina or some type of component, because you're not just providing a privilege to the applicant. You potentially could create a situation where more and more of these types of development could occur. And I think if that's something you want, I would basically encourage you then to do your homework, to then update your comp plan, update the zoning code. And the reason you're doing that, it's not only provides the predictability to the applicant, but it provides predictability to the neighbors, so they have kind of an idea of what shape, size, what is this project gonna look like. So when I looked at this project, I just didn't think it was complete, and there were some things missing, which now we found that they've included with this. So when you look at this property from front, you're really doing two things, you're amending the upland for the product, but you're also amending the zone for the waterway, and when you look at your zoning map, that's where that zoning line begins and ends, at the upland, at the waterway and the upland site. So you actually have two different districts. So the question you have to ask yourself is, are you intentionally trying to create a precedent that you're going to put more and more of a load of not the residential units, let's dismiss that, but just think of the river, of the boating impacts? Because when you proposed years ago for the Benita Bay, and when they put in both the marina, they put in the multifamily, they went through a very, very rigorous plan to identify what would be the impacts. And one of the things they had to do is, they had to make an assumption of what other impacts would be on the river, and the easiest way they could do that was, you have a mechanism in your code now that says, under single-family, one lot, and then you go into how big that is, if it's a corner lot, but you have a mechanism in there that establishes how many boat, or how many marina, in this case, well, it'd be dock or slips or those types of marine accessories. So they did that. Well, now you're changing that dynamic, you're basically now adding an additional load that I don't believe has been anticipated. And, one of the things that I found interesting, to make that detached villa fit, you also had the applicant, they had to get, come in with five pretty significant amendments. You know, when you're moving things over 10 feet, 15 feet, you know, that's not a foot or two, that's not like a small deviation where it's a variance, that's a significant change. So the question you really have is, you're kinda trying to make it up as you go, and I think it'd be more advantageous, if you believe this project has support, take a step back from it, clean up your comp plan, clean up your code, and then provide not just the applicant, but others who may be anticipating this type of development, some type of rationale, because you wanna create that rational nexus between, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and most importantly, this is that expected outcome you have. Because when you don't memorialize it in your comp plan, essentially, what it appears to some people from outside looking in is, you may have different standards for some people and not others. And again, I acknowledge that this applicant has gone through a significant effort, again, from the very beginning when they purchased this property and do what they did. But in this particular case, if you've had it for two years, the question really begs is, why haven't you memorialized the stuff you like into it? And that's what your LPA is for, they're to set up, because your staff may be involved or may not be involved, but your LPA, by very definition, those citizen planners, they get to look at other things, and that's where really, when compatibility really comes into play, is at that neighborhood level, is the people who get to live there, then around that. And the last thing I'll end with is, we took a drone out, and I went up and down the river, and there's a number of locations that, as a realtor, as a land planner, I'm thinking, you approve this, I would suspect that you're gonna see potential infill redevelopment where people will take single-family homes along the river, maybe a couple homes behind them, and lock them into a new use, which, again, you haven't defined yet. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Speaking of time, how are we doing, or?
Eighteen minutes.
We're doing fine.
I wanted to address, in tab number one of the binder, if you have the binders, I can go ahead and read it if you don't, it was included in my email that I sent this afternoon, in response to the revised master concept plan that we received on Friday. I wanted to just chat a little bit about where we're at with the concept plan today and what happened. So among other material revisions to this amended master concept plan, there was an addition that added the number of stories in response to the requirements of your code, so I'm glad to see that they did that. In my view, I think that's an admission that the application didn't include it, and it should have included it per your code, which would be 4-295A6C2. It doesn't specify whether or not these are habitable stories, I think you can make an inference, but as it relates to that top floor, I'm not sure what they're gonna do there. I know they're gonna mention some rooftop viewing, but I think the code requirement is that you need to identify the number of habitable stories, I didn't see the term in there in the master concept plan. As required by section 4295... As required by section 4295A6B of the code, I do see that there were some attempts to add some dimensional standards on these lots. Now, I think it was very important admission today, because I think the record's going to clearly show, and by the way, it's taken quite a bit to get through neighborhood information meetings to get to the point where we now have an admission that they're going to do a land condominium, which is what I suspected. As I mentioned to your zoning board, and as I mentioned in some of my earlier reports, and through the affidavit I provided from a expert real estate attorney, when you do that, you're creating lots. And so under your code, those are lots. And the problem that the applicant has here is that, your code, your code for good reason, I think, I think the mayor tried to get at that when he was looking at, you know, what are the lot coverage requirements? And what I, what I see with respect to the master concept plan is a patent deficiency, because they've already told you that they're going to sell these off. They're going to create lots. They have to, because somebody's going to own these, right? In fee simple. You own a condominium, but it's a land condo. I do plenty of land condos. You sell off the land condo, you'll own, you know, land condo lot X, and whatever the name of the condo is recorded in such and such. But that is a lot. It's an absolute lot. It creates a lot of record in your code. And this application simply doesn't do that. We've struggled, because we're used to seeing, and I think this goes to a little bit of what the planners have said and AICP, you're used to seeing in single family, whether it's a townhouse, whether it's a duplex, whether it's a single family, you see sideyards. You see front yard, you see rear yard. You would normally see in a single family, if you go in an aerial, look in that neighborhood, you'll see properties that extend from the roadway all the way out to the river. They actually have the riparian line in the property. That's what you normally see. Now, if this, if the city council's inclined to give riparian rights in single family areas to folks that live off the water, then I think the planner aptly said, you know, take a look at it, get some good standards in there, get the code right, amend your comp plan. But this clearly, you know, clearly creates, for three of the lots that are not anywhere near the water, they're going to have riparian rights, and they're not anywhere near the water. And then the other lots, based on what they've said, are not going to have riparian rights. They're going to have, that riparian line will be a property owned in common, common area owned by the land condo association. And so what you've done now is you've really created, that's really, that walks and talks and smells like a multifamily condominium. That is not appropriate under your comp plan, is the problem. That's really the rub here, one of the big rubs. So, but as a sufficiency matter, which is important, I think it's a tacit admission that the application that was presented both to the planning, at the zoning board level and the first hearing, was deficient. And my read of the code says that essentially, if it's deficient, even if staff in an ultra various ways said, hey, we're going to bring it forward, even though it was improper, you really, the rationale, the policy underpinning in your code is that you want to make sure that these things are ready for prime time, that we have the kind of things that the mayor was looking at, that we have these very clear lot lines. In addition, we don't, for example, have all of the approximate lot dimensions. We have some of them, but not all of them. If you look, many are missing. It's very difficult to figure out what they're going to sell. I mean, ask yourself the question when you look at it, what's going to be sold off? It's not there. So the lot isn't there. And the code does require very clearly that it contain, you know, the lot detail, the approximate dimensions of the lots. They're also required to show the lot coverage on the, on the lots and the parcels that are, that are showed. And I don't see any detail on that either. I don't, I'm not sure exactly where the boundaries are, where they begin, where they end, is the drive included or not? And there's no indication of what areas will become lots or parcels, and how they'll be, and there's no key that says, this will be owned by the association, these will be sold off, and those are required in your code. There's also no maximum number of dwelling units on the actual master concept plan. I do see language in the ordinance, but not in the master concept plan. And again, that's a deficiency that's required. The mayor talked about the habitable space. Again, I don't see that there as well. And so I think that, that based on that alone, I think that if I were on the city council, I would say to my staff, you know, I think we need to either continue this or do something. But it clearly doesn't, by their own admission, doesn't meet your code requirement. That's a threshold issue, in my, in my opinion. I'll certainly defer to your, to your attorney. The other component that I think I want to highlight in that tab one analysis, was this concept of the detached villa, and whether or not your comprehensive plan allows for that. And obviously, it doesn't expressly say that. And I've heard a lot of analysis today, about 1.1, 1.4 of the, of your, of your comprehensive plan, 1.1.4 that allows for the similar in character, similar intensity and similar impacts. I'm going to come back to that. But I think we can all agree, and I think the record is clear, that there's nothing in your comp plan that says that detached villas. And I think that goes back to the planner testimony, it is permitted. But beyond that, in the way they define it, in the, so it's not defined in your comp plan level, but in their ordinance, they put in this language and they say that multiple detached villas may be located on a single parcel. Now, that's in their definition, it's in your zoning ordinance. Now, again, this kind of gets back to, how do you do your planning? Do you have, you know, does the comp plan drive it? Do you have very methodical, thoughtful planning? Or do we just kind of plan by PUDs, in a way? But if you look at, for example, the comprehensive plan, and if you look at policy 1.1.8B, and I'm going to read this to you, it says, as an alternative to a duplex structure, again, a duplex is very different, because you have a front yard, side yard. These don't have any of those. And you certainly don't have a common area. The riparian line on the accessory dock would be part of the duplex property, the single family platted lot that we're all in. And it says that, as an alternative, you can have one accessory dwelling, such as a garage or apartment, which makes sense, or an accessory apartment, but they may be located on a single lot. That's your code. A single lot occupied by one single family structure. And so that in and of itself is absolutely patently irreconcilable to the language in the code. The code says, or the comp plan says, you can have one single, one accessory dwelling on a lot. Here, they're saying, hey, we can have as many dwellings as we want on a single parcel or a lot. That is not, that is not consistent with your comp plan. So again, I think that illustrates, from a threshold perspective, why I think you might be, you might want to consider taking a pause, taking a harder look at where we're at. I would say, we have to procedurally bring this back to, back to square one. Go back through the zoning, go back to your first hearing, your second read. That would be my, my position. All right, so we've talked a little about tab one, you can take a look at it, there's other arguments and there's other analysis. I know the staff briefly talked about the, about the conservation easement. I gave you greater detail, because I'm not sure, I read the reports, it wasn't clear. I want to make sure you understand how these conservation easements interplay with the current development. I'm not going to spend any time on it, but it's in the, it's in the packet. I wanted to chat briefly about the applicant's rebuttal, and I wanted to share a couple things. We present an attorney affidavit, and the record is clear that the docks will not be located on or adjacent to any single family lot. They're going to create lots. They're going to create land condo lots. And it's irrefutable that, because of the way they're, there's no riparian lines on these lots that extend to the waterway. In fact, they've admitted they have to have this riparian area that's controlled by an association. That is very different from a single family or duplex product that you have. So they're not going to be located adjacent to a single family lot. And they're going to be on essentially common area owned by a condo association. In this case, they've confirmed, which we suspected, it was a land condo. And I heard that today for the first time. But they're not going to be owned by a single family owner as part of their individual condominium unit boundary. It'll be essentially, I presume, a limited common element, that they will have exclusive rights to that dock facility. But again, these are very different. When we come back, and I'm going to come back in a minute, back down to your policy 1.1.4, because we've established that a dwelling, detached dwelling is not a listed use under your comp plan. So now, the only way this dock will hunt, or that you can go forward, is to say under this policy, that somehow this fits. And we're going to talk a little bit about how that doesn't really quite fit. The other thing that, in the affidavit, we pointed out was that, that the common, the limited common element, and that would be the area along the riparian line. When I'm talking about the riparian line, I'm talking about the rights to access the water, that those are going to be, not be part of a unit boundary. So you're really creating, you're creating a lot or a parcel that has no single family use in it. So think about that. So the accessory use is supposed to be tied to a, to a lot that has a house on it. Well, that's not what's happening here. The accessory use now is the dock, but it's tied to a parcel with no, it's going to be owned by a land condo. It's common area. So that doesn't fit with your code either. So this foregoing reality is fully consistent with the applicant's own admission in their own packet, that the upland site is part of a multifamily development. Now, I think it's patently clear, and I think the testimony, when you read our planner's report, that your code does not allow, your comprehensive doesn't allow for upland multifamily development here at this site. Now, maybe you want to revisit that, maybe you don't. But I can tell you, looking at the aerials, that that would be very, in my mind, very incompatible with what you're seeing along that river. The other part I wanted to come back to as part of the rebuttal, was the other examples that they mentioned of multifamily docks. And the applicant asserted in one of their PowerPoint slides, that there are condos in multifamily zoned areas in Benita Springs that have multi-slip docks. And I didn't really see that as much of a revelation, frankly. I mean, I think that one would expect multifamily zoned condominiums to have multiple dock slips, right? That would be very normal. But that does not address the fatal problem with this application, which is very different. We're not talking about a multifamily zoned condominium area here, that having a multifamily dock slip. What we're talking about is that your comprehensive plan does not permit multifamily docks, as defined in 18-21.00347 of the Florida Administrative Code, in a single family designated area like this site is. And just look around, you can see that this is, this is a very different animal to what you see around it. Second, pointing to other examples where someone may have, have, like this site, sought to undermine your comprehensive plan, the code doesn't really provide a rational justification to continue that practice. So if, let's say the horse is out of the barn, maybe we should try to reel that horse back in and protect the integrity of our comprehensive plan and our code. Or perhaps even better, if you like the idea, then go ahead and do the heavy lifting and, you know, amend it. Have discussions with your neighbors, build community, build consensus, so that people can buy with expectations, that when they buy in these areas, that's what they're going to get. The other area I wanted to discuss is this issue of docks versus marina. Now, the applicant, through its consultant, this is where this came out, they stated, quote, "This is a multi-slip marina." These aren't my words, these are HWA, they're consultant. But that's really a red herring. This was in response to the staff's request that the applicant demonstrate compliance with section 358 pertaining to single family docks. The applicant responded and said that they don't, that they have not, that don't need to, they don't need to comply with the single family requirement, because this is essentially a multifamily slip marina, is what they said. Now, by their own admission, and my client's consultants confirmed, that multifamily docks, as such, are proposed by the applicant, are subject to section 357 of the city code, and are not single family docks, which are under a different section of your code, which would be section 7358 of the city code. And the problem for the applicant is that the comprehensive plan doesn't allow for that. Now, I wanted to kind of close my, going back to this 1.1.4, I think this is a really important component. So we've talked about, how do we get to this very bizarre detached, why, I think you want to ask, why are we, you know, why are they doing this? I have my ideas as to why they're doing it. But why, why do we need to reinvent the code? So how do they get, the only way they can get there is to establish under their, under their proposal, that they meet those requirements under the code. And they have to show that their project will be similar in character, intensity and impacts. And I think the testimony, when you read our planner's testimony, is absolutely not similar in character. I mean, these are, these are, one's a duck and one's, you know, not a duck. I mean, these are completely different animals. One of them, a typical single family, whether it's a duplex or whether it's a single family home, you've got a front yard, you've got a side yard, you've got a rear yard, and you have a riparian line that goes with the lot. We don't even have a lot line here in your, in your, that's what's been hard, is they still haven't provided us with a lot line as required by your code. So it's not similar in character. I think the evidence is absolutely patently clear, that you can't rely on policy 1.1.4 to get to the site plan, because it's not similar in character. The intensity, when you look at your development standards, and you have to ask yourself, why are they doing this? Because they can't meet the development standards. So it's not similar in intensity either. This is a very different, a very different animal in terms of intensity, in terms of what they could get if they were to plat it, for example. And then, in terms of impacts, you know, we've talked about that. These are, they're going to have a significant, that's part of why my client is here. Because you're not getting the typical single family dock that you would normally see with the parcel, or maybe a couple docks, or however. You're getting a very significant change in the impact. So I would say, based on that, that the, that clearly that the, the policy under 1.1.4 has not been met, the evidence shows that. And so in conclusion, I just want to say, as you do your analysis, I would say that the application is simply deficient. It doesn't meet the requirements in your own code. Number one, the applicant, I think it's been patently demonstrated, they don't demonstrate compliance with the Benita Plan or the city's land development code. We've talked very, in great detail today, but beyond today, we have a very deep record. When you look at the reports of the planner, the reports that I've done, the prior testimony, the emails, the correspondences. It doesn't meet or exceed, I mean, let's think about the terms, exceeding the performance and locational standards. If you ask yourself, given all the deviations that they're asking for, the encroachments on these, on these mangroves, all the things they're doing to cram this intensity, can you really honestly say that they're exceeding the performance and locational standards on this property? I don't think any serious planner, I think my planner was up here giving you contrary testimony, saying it doesn't meet, and it doesn't exceed the performance standards. The multifamily residential marina is not consistent with the general uses under the comprehensive plan. The request is not compatible with existing or planned uses in the surrounding area. I think that is patently clear. I did look at, I just got them this afternoon, because I saw their, their presentation, I did look at a couple of projects, they were vacant parcels. I mean, both of them, they had, that they highlighted that they claimed were similar, which I haven't even gotten into, they claimed were, they're vacant. So it's not compatible. I think if you look at an aerial, it's absolutely not compatible with what you're seeing. And then finally, the request and its reduced FX deviation, needed to get 10 units and 10 multifamily residential docks on the site will adversely affect the mangrove preserve and the river as an environmentally critical area and natural resources. And for these reasons, I respectfully ask for your denial. Thank you.
Attorney, can I make a motion at this time?
Just very briefly, I just want to point out that Mr. Lewis did it with 12 seconds left to spare. I would, I respectfully request that you allow staff or the applicant to present a rebuttal testimony.
Can we take a break? I'd like to take a 10-minute break.
I don't have a problem with taking a break, but there's one, one condition, is that no communications with any members of the public.
Should we just finish?
We'll do a five-minute, maybe, instead of 10?
Just finish this and then take a 10-minute break?
Well, I don't, the problem was...
I don't know how long they're going to be here. We've been here, only a second. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Eric, you're worried about people talking during the break, correct?
That's my only concern about it, is I don't want anything that's not on the record being presented in. I would ask, just briefly, to give one little clarification following Mr. Lewis's testimony. He asked for two items that the council will have to, also have to take into consideration. Asked if Mr. Slaughter could be added as an expert. He also asked if the additional materials that were not previously in your packet, the items that the city received at 316 today, could be considered part of the record. And so I would ask that you make determinations on those two things, just to make the record clear.
Motion to approve expert witness, motion to approve added material.
Motion to approve added material that we haven't reviewed yet?
Yeah, that's, that's the question. So I'm going to, I'm only going to...
He just read it.
Well, I'm going to, he addressed a good deal of that in his testimony. I do want to point just one point out, we did receive it at 316. He indicated that part of the reason for that late delivery was because of the changes to the master concept plan, which were driven by his comments at the first hearing. It came out, he only received on Friday, and then my revised ordinance, which came out yesterday, I'll clarify, just for the record, that the materials you received today only have one paragraph addressing the master concept plan, the remainder is new information. And the ordinance reflects the original March staff report conditions. The only reason I updated it was because I had made a typo and duplicated one section and failed to remove some language that was already in the condition, so no material changes.
There's another...
There could be, there could be multiple ones. But I want, because they, even though Scrivners are, I didn't want an issue later on, so I, I requested that we get a revised ordinance out to everyone. So...
Do we have a motion? We get a second?
So expert witness, do we agree? Mrs. Stanford is...
Are we doing these separate?
No, we can do...
You can do a motion to break it out, but right now, it hasn't been seconded.
I'll second it.
Let's separate them first.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Well, so now you have a, just to make it clear, corollary motion to break out the two questions, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second for that motion. So you vote on the first question, which is to split the, split the question? And the second question would be, you have one vote on whether, if that's successful, you'd have one vote on Mr. Slaughter being brought in as an expert, and then a second vote on whether to add the additional information received.
Yes, question with that. If we allow the extra information to be received on the record without us having any input on said information, does that in any way, shape or form, change things for the project? Or is it supplemental info added day of kind of thing?
The information would be part of the record, which could be a basis for appeal. It could also be a basis for appeal by the applicant. So my recommendation is the most pertinent part of that, that information regarding to the amended master concept plan, the part that he raised issue, he did testify to almost the entire bulk of that during his presentation. So, thank you. So roll call on the splitting of the motion.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fullick. Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz.
Now, you have a roll call vote on whether or not to accept Mr. Slaughter as an expert witness.
There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Carr.
Who made the second?
Originally, it was the mayor.
Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fullick. Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon.
And now, the remaining vote would be on the additional supplemental package received June 5th, to add that to the record.
In your legal expert opinion, as our attorney, what is your thoughts on how we should proceed?
My recommendation is very last minute. I don't know that anyone's had an opportunity to digest it. And since you're not, you don't have an opportunity to digest it, you could accept it and then give it the weight that it's warranted, which is that you've heard the testimony relating to it, but you haven't had an opportunity to consider that in your decision, or you could just reject it, which would be my recommendation.
Well, I'll go with our attorney, and I motion not to accept.
You don't need to make a motion. We have a roll call vote on...
Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey.
What did we vote on now? I want to take a break. We've got to have a vote.
Just let's finish the vote.
We're in the middle of a vote, mayor.
Yeah.
You're voting on whether or not to accept this additional supplement that was provided today. Should be on your desk.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Fullick.
No.
Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Now, at this point, if there's... The time for public comment is over. You're not a party, so...
He has 12 seconds.
I am denying the objection. Unless the council would like to allow Mr. Lewis to... Saying no action.
Be back here in 10 minutes.
Again, I would ask that none of the council members speak to any members of the public on this action item. Thank you.
Seven thirty-one.
Stand up.
In the words of somebody who sent you a text.
All right, thank you.
I know who the comms are.
Were you aware of this stupid I won? You couldn't see me, see me, could you?
How about them Cubs?
No, is it the Cubs or the White Sox?
Well, no, 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 no. You've heard that old joke.
How about those Yankees? That's what I've always heard.
John, do you have a moment real quick? Sorry.
We're talking about the Cubs.
And the White Sox.
It's not about that. Where's he going?
He's coming around to talk to you.